They'll buy a max.
Hi Daddy.
Okay folks, it's five o'clock, it's time for us to go ahead and get started. This is a call meeting with the Lexington City Council, which means this possibly could be a voting meeting on the issue that we have at hand. And I'm talking about the traffic that is located on South Church, South Spring, McHenry. Those areas is what is going to be discussed. Now earlier today, I think that after speaking with Mr. Ray Evans, which is our project coordinator, Mr. Charlie Smith, which is, represents Barge's design group, that we're not quite ready to make a decision on whether it should be one-way or not tonight. I think that it, the possibility is just premature right now. I think that Barge is still wanting to get a survey. It needs to be, with the city will need to be prepared to strike, if it is a one-way, will need to be prepared to strike, parallel parking or whatever, angle parking, whatever it should be. And I think that most of you know that Church Street is in no shape to be striped at this time. And it's going to get worse, just so you know. I mean, it's going to get a lot worse. I'm putting that disclaimer out right now. So, this has really turned into a informational purposes. Some of the things that have been done, we have enlarged some of the parking that is located, what we call central park spillover. That is, we gravelled that lot more where the folks can park in that. We have ordered signs, had them ordered for a long. They're just simply not in. And that would show, I know we had a work session on it that would show, the city owns what we call the Twin Lakes property and also where the church factory is, all that sign. There is some signs where the former church factory is, but not where the Twin Lakes parking is. I think there was some discussion on that. The signs have been ordered. I think anybody who ordered anything at this day and time knows that it's not like it used to be. So, bear with us, but they've been ordered pretty much as soon as we had our last work session. So, and when we put up signs, they've got to be, got to be certain types of signs and this and that. So, that's where we are. We want to, I think it's important that voices get heard for and any opposition of it. And, but I think after earlier meeting I had with our engineers and Ray, that we came to the conclusion that a decision on one-way traffic cannot be made tonight, okay? So that's where we are. And I'm going to turn this over to either Charlie Smith or Ray Evans. Ray, the project coordinator, Ray, take it away. But I want to thank everybody for coming, and please know that you're not here in vain, okay? I really appreciate it, and I think it's important that property owners and business owners and everyone has a safe table and know exactly what's going on. So, thank you.
So Mayor, just a, I guess it's an issue to start out with. Recall that we're here because we were successful in a grant application with that special mission, an amount of half million dollars to make improvements to South Church Street. As Barge's design solutions, as their engineer on this project, and as part of that process, we had a public meeting here in this room so many weeks ago, maybe eight weeks ago now, probably about forty people, no, we had it at the Chan, yeah, forty people sort of did it. Great conversation, good input. The message that we heard from the retailers and the property owners that were in tenants that night is that we can't, you can't provide us with enough parking. We need parking, we need parking, we need parking. And they suggested that we look at the possibility of making Spring Street and South Church Street a one-way pair in order to maximize the amount on street parking that we could provide. And that's what we have done. So, we're sort of, I don't, I'm a little bit stabbing in the dark right now, but because Barge hasn't done a field survey, we sort of think we know what the curb to curb widths are down through there, but we're not exactly certain. So, there's, that limits Charlie and his staff in making definitive layouts on various options as to, can we have parking on two sides and still have two-way traffic? Can we have parking on one side with two-way traffic? Can we have parking on two sides with one-way traffic, etc., all those various combinations of things. We were forced to have some drawings from K R offered when they did the waterline project, so we've at least got a gut feel of what the pavement was for now. But they generally range somewhere between thirty-six feet curb to curb and thirty-seven and a half or so, almost thirty-eight feet by the time you get down to near Red Cross curb to curb. We must do standard design routines. We must, in the end, have a roadway that is, that meets all the applicable engineering standards, all the applicable statute standards, state local ground standards as well. So, after we've had several discussions with the folks, there is some, I guess, some understanding, some misunderstanding, lack of understanding as to whether or not we can still have parking on both sides with, for instance, with airway parking on both sides with two-way traffic, or whether or not we can only have that with one-way traffic, whether or not we could have angle parking with two-way traffic or not. So, as we discussed earlier this afternoon, it just seemed more appropriate to us to be iron plaid when we come back to it to you folks. The primary purpose of this meeting in my mind was to give Charlie and his staff some direction to proceed with the design. I think what we're, what we're now suggesting is that Charlie can proceed with surveying, and, and once we get that surveying done, he can do some conceptual layouts based on that field survey that can definitively tell us whether or not, which of those, those various options are legitimate and are not legitimate. We greatly appreciate the investment that's been made in South Church Street, and it's just, it's a beautiful place. The businesses seem to be going very, very well. I will tell you just so, as a aside, well, I was going to, I was going to mention sort of what appeared to be the most logical option, but I'm not even going to speak to the options at this point. But Charlie and his staff did do some layouts on the best information they had, and, you know, and we looked at those yesterday, but I, I think that the more prudent way to approach this is to get a true legitimate survey so we know to the tenth of a foot what the curb to curb dimensions are. And by the way, the curb to curb dimension will be exactly what it is now when the, in the ultimate construction of the, of the A R C funded project. We've got some unusual considerations down there. There's, if you think about the east side, that is not just a level six-inch curb sidewalk. It raises up to certain distances and then back down again, and then up and back down again. That will factor into parking layout. I can't, I can't park parallel next to a sidewalk that's two feet high and still get my door open. I can't overhang my bumper parking with angle parking in the same situation. So that causes everything to creep back toward the middle of the roadway in the, in the design consideration. But Charlie will, will worry about all those sorts of things when, when he gets his survey. And as we discussed, you know, in a meeting before this one, between the Mayor Charlie and I, we're going to proceed, we're going to try to get that survey done absolutely as quickly as possible. Now, Charlie's not going to have an answer the day the survey comes in. He'll have an answer maybe a week after the survey comes in, but not, but certainly not a day after the survey comes in. Oh, one other thing, so, there's some little confusion from the last meeting that I was quoted in a paper that said that if we made these one-way pairs, that we could take the traffic signal down Spring Street, at Spring Street and Main Street. That's not what I said. I said that the mast arm and signal heads that are facing Spring Street going northbound will no longer be necessary to be, the rest of the traffic signal would remain in place exactly as, as it is now. Do you have to enter any questions or, or can Charlie have?
Hey, so there was a March deadline, I think Ray, either you or Charlie brought up about having the survey in or complete A R C grant. Can you speak on that? Ray can come to the mic here.
It's actually a, a design completion by, I can't remember the date of March, but it's a March date. So, it will be, there's a lot of the design that Charlie can do regardless of what's happening curb to curb. Then, but the final design has to be based on what the parking layout is. So, all of this has to be resolved in time for them to be, and, and we've just gotten an extension from A R C in that deadline. I hope that we would not have to be in a position to go back and have to ask them for another, another extension.
By saying that, I, I will try to give them, give the folks that are here tonight, so does it look like we will have another meeting sometime in February, Ray? Or are we talking about like, like January or what week?
I think, I think.
I don't want to keep them under towels here.
In, in order for Charlie to finish his design on schedule, we will have to have at least a work session, if not a, a special call meeting sometime in February to finalize what is parking the last one, on parking layout, parking layout. And again, it's going to be based on sound engineering design, as, as nationally recognized as, as a standard for those sorts of things. And, and Mayor, it can't be, with, with this new instruction in this grant, it can't be what we've always done. It, it, you know, if, if what we've always done violates the standard, then we can't do that anymore. Or we simply don't make the improvements.
Thank you. Now, we've got several folks here, again, I thank all of you for coming. If anyone would like to speak at this call meeting, they're welcome to. If anybody would like to, if they had any questions. Yes, ma'am, come on in, Ms. Abel.
Mr. May, what can I ask?
Can you push the button and say your name, please?
This one? I'm April Stover. I'll just bring it really quick. He brought up a, do I have to keep opening?
No.
Sorry, move this far.
Take your finger off.
I'm April Stover. I am one of the owners of Reborn, I guess, coffee and bakehouse down South Church. And we really appreciate all you guys listening, all of us out, the merchants and the business owners. The parking is a huge thing for us. I just wanted to bring this up since we're talking about everything. And that is very important to make sure it flows better, it's better for everybody involved. And my biggest concern is safety issues. That is a huge concern for us. I'm a school teacher, kids at heart, I don't have children around, but I've got my nieces and, and I worry about all those little girls, those other kiddos, little boys running across that street there. You're having to pull over and pull aside. We're working really hard with all the merchants and business owners to park away, you know, to travel in so we can save all those spots for customers. But when you've got little kids looking both ways and it's hard to see, there's vehicles parked where you can't see, darting across the road, I'm terrified that one of those little babies is going to get hurt. Like, it worries me to death when we, you know, come in, seeing it's hard for us to say to get around other vehicles. So I do want you all to really, really think about that, whatever decisions made, that is best. But I want you to keep those kids in mind, because it is hard, and then you're just going to know when one's going to dart out. If it was one direction, if that is possible, it would be a little bit easier in my head safety-wise. That doesn't mean that it's logistical or able to be done. It may inconvenience a few people, because, you know, if you do what you've always done, there's no progress being made. So I just wanted to bring that, that y'all at least strongly consider that when the time to make the decision is made. Thank you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Abel. Is there anyone else that would like to?
Yes, sir.
I'm Jay Warren, I live down at the South Church Street. Yeah, I don't know, several of y'all know, remember when Mike Maynard had French Garden? On Saturdays, you stayed away from that end of town. There was more business from eight o'clock to twelve o'clock on Saturday mornings than that day, mugging through Saturday night. I mean, it was crazy. If you make it a one-way street, you're looking at a drag strip. You watch these kids, teenage kids driving and then parking in an old shirt factory lot. I've seen them pull out there, they get sideways, they're squatting cars, blowing black smoke. You know, you open up a one-lane wide road, that's a disaster zone. They're going to be flying down there, they're going to be through my fences, they're going to run into my barn, they're going to turn my box down. I mean, it's going to be crazy. The ditch at the city dugout, if you're going down Church Street to my house, they're on the right, over Main Street. I've seen three or four cars coming off a railroad the way it is now. They fly through there, they're going to stop Sunday, end up in the ditch. Have to call a wrecker or call somebody, one of their buddies to come put them out. I mean, yeah, it's dangerous with these kids here, but when the people rented the buildings, bought the buildings, whatever, they know what the situation was down there. They know there wasn't a lot of parking. You obviously helped a lot by fixing the gravel lot on Shirt Factory Place. And I've been noticing people using it more and more. You know, it's wonderful, you've got the Twin Lakes building. You know, I have noticed a lot of the tables got the businesses, they're still parking right in front of their building. They worry about parking as an issue, or if they'll park in the Twin Lakes lot, Old Shirt Factory lot, on down, problem solved. I found him today this evening, or earlier today, he owns a business down there. He said from down through there, there are seventy, is it seventy-six or seventy-eight parking spots when you count both sides of the road. I mean, my gosh, about all day up to about, well, until I got ready to come to the meeting this evening, the most vehicles, I counted from Cedar Street to the square, was fifteen vehicles. Ten of those vehicles been up around the postal office, postal workers and everything else, parts of them. They've been five down there at the new businesses, most of the day. Now, when I come down through here to come to the meeting, there's about fifteen, sixteen cars right through there in the new section where everybody's moving into. You know, I mean, when you've got seventy-something parking spots, if the business owners and employees were parking these parking lots, they've got plenty of room in front of their buildings for their customers. You know, I mean, my big concern, you know, yes, safety, I would hate to see a child get run over. That would be the worst thing possible. But, you know, these parents would come through there and them fifteen, sixteen cars that was there this evening, they could park that much further closer to the sidewalk. You know, they had, I'd say eighteen to twenty-four inches, they could have got over more. Well, you do that on both sides, you're getting close to four foot. You know, that, that's a whole lot of room when you come down the road. You know, that's, but my concern also is, you know, just being able to go to and from my home, you know, and I understand you have to give something, you have to take something, you know, I, I understand that. You're not going to satisfy everybody in this room. But, you know, I need to be able to get in and out of my driveway with a trailer, and if I, if it snows, I've got to be able to get a running shoe to get up my driveway. Because I, there's no way I can walk up my driveway, you know? So, I've got too much of a bounty on me, you know? But, you know, that's my concern, you know? I think there's solutions other than making it just a one-way all the way down through there. I mean, like I said, Twin Lakes old and they're, you know, they have big semis coming in. How are they going to come or go? You know, you can't touch semi, I, I didn't know, you can't touch semi, just, you know, at a regular turn, you've got to have a wider glass. And I know when he's got trucks coming in, he'll have them riding around, come by the bypass, head up towards Church and go straight across. They can get in, you know? They've got to be able to get in and get out, you know, it's, and I mean, I have people coming to my house like I'm pulling a thirty-foot trailer. You know, I've got a twenty-foot trailer I go in and out of, but the change when they come in with the first foot, you know, we've got to be able to do that. So, anybody got anything they'd like to ask me about? If I have any more.
I don't have any questions for you, Jay. I think that, like I said, there's not going to be any decisions made tonight.
Mm-hmm.
But I certainly appreciate hearing your voice and along with Ms. Abel's that it came along as well. There will be another work session or another, another call meeting possibly, if that's what we need to do, once we get a sound survey back from our engineers. And the survey may answer a lot of questions.
Mm-hmm.
It may answer a lot of questions, whether it can even be one-way or it could remain two-way, we'll see.
Okay.
So I, I think that, that's the missing piece of the puzzle right now.
Right.
So these folks up here can make a sound decision. So, but, so, I don't have any, does anybody have any questions for Jay or anything? I don't have any. So I appreciate you, you coming in and.
Yes, sir, appreciate your time.
Absolutely, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to?
I do. He said he wouldn't go do it, so I'm going to. I don't have good luck around here sometimes.
Push the button.
My name's Penny Proctor, and I have been on Spring Street over twenty years. I know there's a problem on Church Street, but it really has been brought to my attention, and I try not to get emotional about it, but it's elderly people that use that drop-off box. That's the only way they get to that post office to drop off their package, do whatever. The only way that they're comfortable coming out of there is through that red light right there on Main Street. They don't have to go in that mumble and jumbo. Church Street going down though, they go right to the red light and go onto Main Street and go, oh, that's a big concern. So that's all I want to tell you. I wish, I hope to God you guys take that into consideration, especially on the one-way going down Spring Street. I don't understand why it's got to be Spring Street, but I'm sure Mr. Evans will tell me.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else that would like to, yes, come on in?
I have a question. How far from the dog grooming area, y'all, the city owns most of that on down and the dog park's going to go down on the end, right?
Yes, sir.
Why can't we make a parking lot down there? A nice one for the people, the customers and all for South Church Street? Now, that has nothing to do with the one-way, what I'm talking. But, I mean, we got that land down there, and it would be great, like we did up here for the square, to put a parking lot down there, and that would help both the coop and everybody else. And I wish we could, because I tell you, she's talking about the safety of the children, which is true, but anybody, when the dance studio is there, you can't see to get out on that street. Somebody, as we all know, probably me, I'll go through there, you know, going to have a little fender bender probably. But please consider that, Ray. See if you can work it into grants, you work all this other stuff in the times.
Thank you. Thank you. On the, not in the particular parking lot that you're talking about where the body used to be, but we are going to be redoing the Twin Lakes parking area up there. And it will resemble a whole lot like we've done up here on the square in the Nancy Knowles and Shannon Cantor's building. So, but now, on that large parking lot, we have not designed it at this time, but there is going to be some time parking in the gravel area of the Twin Lakes buildings.
Yeah. That, that'll help some.
Yeah.
But we need to get something further down for those, because those people are doing a tremendous job with the buildings and the businesses.
Yes, they are, I agree. Thank you, Arne. Is there anyone else that would like to address?
I'm just, and this is, and this is not, and I don't care if you do it one-way, but I like one-way. Wonder which one do I push?
The long one.
I share a pile to Forte Keaton Street. I worked on the square for thirty years. I never parked on the square, not one day. You know, before we had to park down in the Lice Simpson's parking lot behind their store. For come, rain, sleet, snow, whatever, ninety-eight degree weather, you park down there, and you know why we park down there? So the customers, but not, no other business on that square at that time would park nowhere except in front of their store. And then they would fuss because there was no place for their customers. Get real, people, move off your butt and walk. And another thing, I don't care if you do, I'm not curious, say, do it one-way down one street, come up and up, don't matter to me, but I'm going to tell you something. You cannot own a business and not care about your customers more than you care about your safety. So that's all I'm going to say. And a parking lot, when I'm up, when I shop, when it's summer, I trip over at Union Bank and walk around the whole thing. If somebody my age can do that, good God, can't nobody else.
Thank you, Karen. Is there anyone else that would like to? Yes, come on in, sure.
Don't have to come to Sir Curtis. My name's Norm Osborn, I'm with the American Legion down there in South Church. Is the dog park, is that a definite thing that's going to happen down there, or is that just something up for consideration?
I'm going to let, I'm going to give it to Mr. Ray Evans. Ray, you want?
Yeah, so, um, we haven't yet had our check signing ceremony.
Can you let him have the mic there, Norm, please?
Not the chair.
We haven't yet had our check signing ceremony. We have been granted the grant, but we have not had the official check, uh, uh, ceremony yet. I've worked diligently on that, uh, frustrated that it hasn't happened yet. Uh, but, uh, I, I see no reason that it's not going to, uh, come to fulfill that. And as part of that, there, there is a fairly substantial parking lot, uh, behind the, uh, that, uh, appears similar to the one that we got on, uh, Main Street, uh, on the square down.
Ray, is that dog park location specific that Grant received? Is it tied to that?
It is tied to that land. However, the size, the size that we showed in the grant is probably substantial more than we're actually going to propose to the government. Which will allow more special parking.
Anyone else? Randall, come on up, I know you. Doesn't like a man to call you L, does he?
I like it.
Is there anyone else? The board members, is anybody have? Okay. Here, here and nothing else, I want, again, I want to thank you again for coming out and, uh, for being concerned, uh, for, uh, your business, your community, safety issues that we've heard. Thank you so much for being here. Uh, we will have another meeting. Sorry, government does meetings a lot, I lied. Uh, but, uh, we will have another meeting after the survey comes in. Uh, and so this, this board here can make a sound decision on, uh, on what they want to do. And, uh, I think you heard tonight, uh, that there are, uh, feelings on both sides of the street. I guess, for lack of a better word, uh, on, uh, on the two-way and the one-way as well. So, we hope that, uh, once we get the survey, it will answer some questions and clear some things up. Uh, and then we can make a more informed, sound decision, uh, then, okay? Uh, but if no one else has anything else to say, uh, then we will go ahead and adjourn, uh, from this, uh, call meeting, or once or twice. All right, motion to adjourn. Motion made by Alderman Bill Linders, our second.
Oh, can I say one more time please? I get it, it's got.
Hold on, hold on. You want to withdraw or? Go ahead.
Sorry, my bad.
Sure.
In regards to the dog park, which I, you know, it's, it's by me anyway, but if you go through that, you don't want to have a bunch of dogs washed away when a big flood, rain comes. We're going to have to do something about this water still. Because it's still, that housing plot that you all put on my, completely destroyed the field, it ain't worth fifteen cents. I mean, it, only thing it's done is keep, uh, Collin Street from flooding out. If floods made out and go right on down, it's going to worth it. Dog park, why they haven't stayed when that water comes? Because I'll have water get knee-tot deep inside my barn. And we need to try and get something done about that also.
All right, thank you. We, we, we...
Thank you.
I'll, I'll put Mr. Pete and Charlie, I'll lock them in the room here in a minute. But I do, I do appreciate, hey, I'll just say I do appreciate your concern. And we do know that there's some water issues that come off of that mountain for sure.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, but, uh, and then we've got those big ditches down there that it's supposed to be set up for a hundred-year flood, so. Okay, let's try it again. Is anybody? All right, motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Bill Linders, our second.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Ken Dotson. I'll for the motion, let Noah say aye. I'll oppose, like, so I will adjourn. Thank you, everybody, for coming out.